All on January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, the time is seven P M. Liam, what did you call the rules?
Member Wyatt?
Here.
Member Owens?
Here.
Member Kleister?
Here.
Member Stroya?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Athenee?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, we'll start with finance and property.
Okay. I didn't get it. Okay, so at the last meeting, many of you remember, we have some properties that we are trying to move around. And this is the one on Stradivant, so moving it from the North Canton C I C and ready to transfer it so that we can sell it. So this is an attempt with, as we talked about, we had a number of properties and moving forward with it. Any thoughts or questions? Ben, any other?
No, that's pretty much it.
That's it, okay.
Moving it to consolidate it with another piece of property and hopefully have a better opportunity to sell it.
Okay, so I motion to move item three A to the council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries.
Okay, and the next one is for appropriations for current expenses, and we do this throughout the year. And that's just what we're doing, kind of a upkeep and maintenance sort of procedure.
Couldn't make it one month.
I know, I did, I looked. I said there was a donation for the dog, and there were, you know, some little random things, and so, any questions or concerns on that? All right, so I motion to move item three B to the council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. All right, next we'll go to personal safety, David.
So this is amending chapter one fifty-five. We need to create a position for a part-time building code inspector. The purpose is for fill-in, because we need to have a building inspector. If somebody's out sick, we need to get somebody to replace that. We can contract with SafeBuild, but at a significantly higher price than having a part-time person that we can call in when needed. Anything else to speak?
No, you said it well. We have entered and executed a supplemental contract agreement with SafeBuild. By state law, we have to have a building inspector. We only have one now, since we have gone away from SafeBuild, and our building department is our employees. Say he's out sick for some unforeseen reason. If we did use SafeBuild, they are ninety-five dollars an hour. We are going to create a part-time position in the ordinance at thirty-five dollars an hour. And our chief building official does know someone that, you know, might be interested, and there's others that might be interested, and that way it'd be a considerable cost savings. And again, it's only if we need it. Our current guy might not be sick, and we may never have to use it, but we need it there in case, in case we need it.
Good safety net.
It's not a big addition, though.
Well, good planning as well, because that's a huge cost savings, so thank you.
Any other comments? You will make a motion to move item four A to the council agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Okay, Street Alley, John.
We have an ordinance authorizing the vacation of a portion of Park Avenue northeast from the south right of Way of House. And a morning portion of Whitworth Street northeast to the west right of Way of Path Avenue northeast within the corporate limits of the city of North Canton. I take a motion, I need a motion and second.
I got a question, just to clarify. All the houses that are on, are owned by Maple Street Commerce, correct? So we're not putting anybody in an island where they're on a private road, correct?
All, all of the properties on both sides of all of the streets to be vacated is owned by Maple Street Commerce.
Okay. And then I think the added advantage is, this is a road that really truly serves no need for the city, being that there is, they're the only people who are on there, and it's a road that we no longer have to take care of and maintain.
Yeah, so there are, Whitworth runs along the backside of the factory, and there are three blocks of Whitworth, main to Orchard, Orchard to Park, Park to Path. The first two blocks have already been, so this is the last block.
My understanding is the infrastructure, the water lines, or hybrids are all private?
So the hybrids are private, there's some private water line, there is one public water line, our engineer corrected me since our conversation this afternoon. But under state law, in vacated streets or alleys, there is an automatic public utility.
So we access what we need.
Well, I need a motion and second to recommend item five A to the planning commission for further consideration.
I'll make the motion.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. I'll go ahead. I'll make a motion to postpone further consideration of item five A until the planning commission's recommendation is received.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. And I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
Aye.
Opposed? We'll start the regular meeting in two minutes. I now call to order the city council meeting of January twenty seventh, twenty twenty five, the time is seven oh nine P M. Opening prayer, we have Pastor Carl Pace of Zion United Church of Christ.
I invite you to pick up whatever attitude is customary to you when praying and reflecting, and join me in prayer. Creator God, I make this appeal to you in this chamber, where important things are afoot, and important things are decided, but none so important that we shouldn't fail to always be attentive to the human element. It feels like a slippery invitation to come and address a body of governmental leaders when we're living in a time when sometimes that turns out very poorly. But I'm thankful to be here, and I'm thankful for everybody that turns out to show concern and to invest their time and energy into local affairs, local politics. And we're thankful for that because on the national stage and on the international stage, there are a thousand reasons why we might want to turn away and turn aside and no longer tune in. But what an opportunity for people to become more invested in building community. When a house has cracks in its foundation, the crack in the wall might be small, but when you go two or three stories up, it becomes a major issue. And I can't help but think, Lord, that part of our divisiveness in this country is because we haven't attended to the foundation well. This is the place where that can happen. I pray your blessing and grace would be with our mayor and all of his associates, with this council, and with all the community that shows up to do this work, that they would never lose sight of that important work of bridging the gap and closing the fissures before they become a bigger problem, and help them in the midst of policy wrangling and ordinances and all of the day-to-day stuff, to never lose the humanity of their work. Bless them in it, keep them safe and healthy and well. May our community prosper in your name.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Liam, would you please call the rule?
Member Wyatt?
Here.
Member Owens?
Here.
Member Kleister?
Here.
Member Stroya?
Here.
Member Warren?
Here.
Member Athenee?
Here.
Member Orr?
Here.
Seven present.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to approve as presented minutes from the December ninth, twenty twenty-four, December sixteenth, twenty twenty-four, city council meetings. The chapter eleven thirty-six as amended by ordinances sixty-seven, twenty twenty-four, and sixty-eight, twenty-four. Chapter one sixty-three as amended by ordinances eighty, twenty twenty-four, and eighty-nine, twenty twenty-four. And the twenty twenty-four final appropriations as set by ordinance eighty-six, twenty twenty-four, and the December twenty twenty-four and Q four, twenty twenty-four financial report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, and we have two people signed up for public speaks. Liam, if you would like to reiterate, please.
At this time, members of the public who have signed up to address the council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to legislative items appearing on this meeting's agenda. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials of the dais. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in an ejection from the premises. All, you're up first.
All right, Mr. President, I just wanted to briefly talk on the item on the agenda tonight, I think it's number seven. The tax increase from one point five to two percent. I was looking back over the meeting in December, the last one you guys had, where I think the first reading took place. And I know that there were some remarks made, I think Councilman Stroya, you were one of them, about making sure that we're still funding our streets with this proposal. And I think it sounds like you guys are really close to that and coming up with a solution. I just really wanted to reiterate from a tactical standpoint how important I think that is. I live on Winston Avenue, I've been there for about fifteen years. We adopted a puppy this past summer, so I walk my street a lot lately, and it's really made me aware, not just what I hit in my car, but what I see. And I was telling Ben before the meeting, I can see the fabric below all the layers. It's sticking out. My dog is actually excited about the strings sticking out in the street. So it's kind of crazy to me that I can see that much history right now, just looking down. So that says to me, obviously, we've struggled for many, many years to fund our streets. We know that, we know costs are increasing. So I really just hope that tonight, when we go through the next reading, and you guys have your conversation, it sounds like maybe since December, we've had some solutions on the table. Just want to stress how important that is to many of us.
Thank you. Any comments, questions for?
What kind of street, is it a concrete?
Mine's just regular asphalt. Yeah, I'm not on one of the old brick ones that was covered up. It's definitely always been asphalt issue. You know, every year I see, I don't even know you guys still have the pothole machine, for lack of a better technical term. I see it every spring, you guys come down, you patch what you can, you do what you can, right? But it's to the point now where that's just not holding up. It's pretty dire. And I know I'm not alone. You live in my neighborhood, you live in my neighborhood, you know. So I know, I'm preaching to the choir, but yeah, I just wanted to reiterate how important that is.
Yeah, we'll definitely be discussing some solutions tonight. Thank you. Matt, you're up next. Bass?
Yep.
Sure, it's the last call.
No, because something, I have notes written down, some things kind of changed based on some information.
Oh, okay, all right.
Gotcha, thank you.
All right, all right, moving on to old business. So Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance five twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance accepting a point one acre tract of land from the city of North Canton School District, or from North Canton City School District along the south side of Charlotte Street Northwest between Hillcrest Avenue and Ream Avenue, located in the city of North Canton, Ohio, and dedicating the same as a road right of way.
Okay, Street Alley, John.
Okay, this is the third reading. There's nothing more to add to this, Liam?
Nope, nothing new.
Make a motion, or ask me for a motion and a second.
Go ahead.
I'll make the motion to adopt the third reading of ordinance oh five, twenty twenty-five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Question carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance seven, twenty twenty-five?
An ordinance amending chapter one ninety-two, income tax of the codified ordinances of the city of North Canton to increase the rate of municipal income tax from one point five percent to two percent, beginning January first, twenty twenty-six, for the purpose of providing funds for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment, extension and enlargement of municipal services and facilities, and capital improvement.
Okay, finance and property, Stephanie.
Okay. I think to Holly's point, this is what you were kind of mentioning, and wondering why are we doing the income tax and what is the need? And if we're going forward with this, you'll see in a later ordinance, removal of those, some different other assessments. Ben, do you want to talk about this at this point, or kind of stuff? Okay, that'd be great.
So as some of our speakers just expressed, and as several of you expressed, and I've worked with a couple of you over the break to work on, there's concern about the funding for paving of residential streets under the proposal. And Liam, if you could go to my first slide, we'll recap why there is concern. So under the current property tax levy, we bring in three hundred eighty-eight thousand, six hundred fifty-one. Under this income tax proposal, we would end up with three hundred fifty-four thousand, two hundred eighteen. I'm going to round that to a nice even thirty-four thousand, four hundred for the sake of our conversation tonight. So we have a net reduction of thirty-four thousand, four hundred in our funding for residential streets. Which we just heard, some residents are concerned that we're already not raising enough, so a reduction is difficult. So in working with a few of you over the break, we've prepared a proposal to increase paving funding without an additional tax. Next slide. So there are going to be four steps to this, and I promise we will do the math at the end, but I'm going to start with the example. So step one is dedicate the funds that are going to be made available by reducing our debt burden to paving streets. Number two is allocating unspent funds from twenty twenty-four, so this year's, this past year's budget that just closed, that you all just approved your final appropriation amendments for. Number three is we then equalize out those unspent funds as our debt burden continues to reduce. So basically, we stop using one-time money and start using recurring money as it becomes available. And then that should give us the net result of doubling funding available for road paving without an additional tax. So now let's get into the details of how this all works. So part one is decreasing our debt burden. So we have some outstanding debts from two thousand and eleven that are nearly repaid. And what that means is our debt payments every year are at that point where they're starting to get lower and lower. So, for example, from twenty twenty-five, so the year we're currently in, to next year, twenty twenty-six, our annual obligations on that debt is going to drop by twenty-five thousand. So if we obligate that twenty-five thousand to filling that thirty-four thousand, four hundred hole, that brings our hole down to less than ten grand, which is easily fundable through the normal budgeting process. So now we've essentially matched the levy we currently have. So that's part one. Part two is the twenty twenty-four unspent funds. Next slide. So for fiscal year twenty twenty-four, you all just approved the year-end balancing of the budget. And the various city departments that are funded by the general fund have returned one point six million dollars in unspent funds. Now, this is from things coming in under budget, this is from department heads being basically conservative and managing to complete things under budget. This is from maintenance of equipment, not as many things broke as we thought were going to break, because we take good care of things. We never hired a part-time police officer, so we never spent any part-time police officer wages. It's a whole bunch of little things that just collectively add up to this large number of one point six million. Now, these funds do not represent a recurring revenue. So we should not use them to fund recurring operations, so hiring people or buying some new software that we have an annual license for. But it is okay to use for one-time capital projects, like paving some streets. And so, one point six million, council could allocate four hundred grand a year to double that paving money. And that would get you four years to match street paving and essentially double what we currently have before those unspent funds run out, and you need to have equalized it from cuts elsewhere. So then step three is continued debt reduction. Next slide. So as I said earlier, we have some older debts that are starting to decrease. And over the next five years, with those older debts coming to the end of their life cycle, and hopefully with the sale of properties, we expect the city's recurring annual debt obligations to continue to reduce. And so as funds that we previously had to allocate for debt payments become available again on an annual basis, those can be used to phase out spending unspent twenty twenty-four funds and continue to match that street paving levy. So now we'll do all the math like I promised to show you how this all works out. Next slide. So twenty twenty-five, the year we're in right now, everything's rounded for simplicity. Three hundred eighty-eight thousand coming from a property tax levy to pay for it. And this is all hypothetical based on what council wishes to do with this money. Twenty twenty-six, so next year, we have the twenty-five thousand dollar debt reduction occurring. Our estimated carryover in the street paving levy fund will be two hundred seventy-five thousand. So even though we won't have paving levy revenue next year, we will have some leftover savings essentially. And then that first year of unspent twenty twenty-four funds would give another four hundred thousand that we could spend seven hundred thousand next year on paving residential streets. Then in twenty twenty-seven, our target is roughly that eight hundred thousand. So in the new income tax, we would have roughly three hundred fifty thousand. From our debt reduction, we'd have roughly fifty thousand, and then we'd have year two of that twenty twenty-four unspent funds and another four hundred thousand. Now, how quickly we phase out the unspent funds will depend on how quickly our debt obligations decrease, how quickly we can sell properties. So the next three years are just sort of a hypothetical decreasing to show you how the phase out would work. So in twenty twenty-eight, again, we're targeting eight hundred thousand. We still have that three hundred fifty from income tax. We upped the debt reduction to a hundred grand, and now we're only using three hundred fifty thousand of the twenty twenty-four unspent funds instead of the four hundred thousand. Twenty twenty-nine, again, eight hundred thousand. We still have our three hundred fifty from the new income tax. Our debts now decrease to the point that we can put in another two hundred thousand of income tax and only use two hundred grand of twenty twenty-four unspent. And then by twenty thirty, we're still at eight hundred thousand, but it's all income tax and no longer using those saved unspent funds. Questions?
Isn't it fair to say hypothetically that if we're looking at those numbers, that historically our income tax has gone up the last three years? So conceivably, we can estimate that it's going to go up the next three or four years. So getting to that income tax level of three hundred fifty thousand should be easier every year, or could be increased.
Correct. I mean, that's for the sake of simplicity.
Because wages tend to go up every year.
And if new jobs are added.
Right.
Yep.
Bigger bonus.
Okay.
Now, if there were a couple of emergencies, let's say a couple of water lines break and stuff, how does that affect?
That's a separate fund. So it would not affect this.
So with the debt reduction, I mean, we can pretty much put that anywhere. So what you're basically saying is, is you're moving it from one pot and saying, we want to put this towards streets.
I am suggesting that council make the choice to obligate that to streets, yes. But it could be used for anything else in the world, yeah.
Like, I'm assuming that we had some reduction last year, so we would have had some less payment, and that just went payer bills in some fashion.
Now, the first big step down is from twenty-five to twenty-six.
This year's, like, what did we get last year?
Are we talking about debt?
Yeah. Like, what did we say?
So it's been pretty consistent, because they're twenty and thirty-year debts.
Got it.
So these were the two thousand eleven and two thousand and six, were both combined and refunded in two thousand sixteen. So the first part, the two thousand second part is rolling off.
Got it.
So we still have the two thousand eleven part continuing for another five or six years. That debt is completely done, paid off in twenty thirty.
I like the idea of allocating unspent funds from last year to the streets, which carry the greatest need right now, I believe.
Eleven is a great idea.
I agree. I think it's smart to quote-unquote earmark it for that. That resolves my major concern about not having the street levy ongoing, so.
So no, I like that. Your question on that, which came up earlier tonight in fact, is that street levy. When discussing before, how do you tell the residents that we're not going to put a street levy on? We show that we've got these carryover funds, we show that we're going to be doubling what we've been spending in the last five years under the property tax, that we're not going to put another street levy property tax on. I'll say right here, I won't vote to put a property tax levy per street on for five years.
No, I, yeah, I don't think we can. I don't think that's fair, that's, that.
But I think we need to communicate that.
Yeah, totally.
And that's, that's your five years, right there.
If I may add, so we're going to be discussing the repealing of the outstanding property levies for resolution nine twenty-five. We could very easily add something in, if I'm not mistaken, Ben and Liam, correct me if I'm wrong, we could add a line item in there saying that we won't seek an additional levy for what we're repealing for X amount of time.
Is the resolution binding on council members if this council board changes?
No. I mean, so to James' point, yes, you could absolutely add that line. The seven of you's oath in that resolution is not legally binding on future councils. So if there's seven new people, they could completely ignore that resolution.
But we could maybe add to that resolution that as long as a majority of council is made up of the seven people at the dais now, can we do that? As long as four of us are still here, we're not?
It's not even legally binding on you. Once this term ends and you're re-elected to a new term, if you are re-elected, it's a whole new term.
Could it be an ordinance, and does that become legally binding then? Could we make?
I would have to defer to legal councils, to whether it is legal for you to prevent a future council from exercising their constitutional powers.
But ultimately, if a levy comes to the ballot, the residents will have the opportunity to vote for it. If we're telling the residents today that under this plan, we as a council aren't going to put a levy on for five years, that council changes and they choose to put that levy on, I think the residents will have a memory long enough to remember.
I would hope so. Yeah.
Yeah, so we've been working on a lot of F A Qs on our website, and one of the ones we have is we have is what guarantee do I have that there will not be another levy? And quite simply, the easiest guarantee is we can't pass another levy unless voters say so. You, you, the voters, can hold us to that word. You don't have to trust that we will keep that word.
But I won't vote for another street levy for the next five years to be on the ballot.
Yeah, same here.
I'll join you.
Yep.
But that's assuming that the tax levy passes, isn't it?
Correct. But what are you going to do during that time to help it pass?
Tell your friends.
Exactly. Let's focus on that.
Should the levy pass as well, I would probably recommend, and Jim and I would bring to you, an appropriation amendment to transfer that one point six million to the capital fund and encumber it for paving. We could do, we don't have the official budgets three and four years out, but we could still encumber that money with a purpose, and council would have to move it away from there officially through an ordinance.
I like that.
Yeah, I like that, too.
At least that would give you a start.
Because I think that demonstrates to the public that we're serious about this. We know that the roads are a problem and it's dedicated funds at that point.
Absolutely. Yeah, thank you.
Chairman Warren, do you want me to talk about the emails?
Yes.
Do you want me to address the thing?
Yeah.
So Chairman Warren sent me an email that I'm going to say clarifying questions about the levy, but I'm going to do my best to answer here tonight. So the first and biggest thing that I do want to make clear is that the scenario we are proposing a comparison between is two different future hypothetical scenarios. It is not a comparison between what you're paying right now versus what this income tax would cost you. And the reason we are presenting it that way is because if this income tax doesn't pass, what the city will likely ask for is seven point three mils in property taxes instead. And so where those come from is the street levy at two mils back on again, the fire station back on at two mils again, and then replacement of our fire and EMS levies at the same millage, three point three mils, but it would, that would have the effect of raising an additional one million dollars more than this income tax. So why would we ask for three point three mils more than this income tax is asking for? That's because right now our fire department is supposed to be funded off property taxes, but they are currently about a million dollars in the hole, so to speak, and being supported by income tax, which is drawing resources away from police, dispatch, parks, road paving. And so when those levies come up for renewal, we would likely seek to increase them in order to fully fund the fire department out of property taxes again. And so, yes, the comparison. I agree with the author of the email that this comparison is comparing one vote succeeding versus four votes of the public succeeding. But those are the two scenarios that we need to keep providing the level of services we have. Either we need to pass this income tax or we need to pass those four property taxes. And honestly, the real biggest threat to us as a city is replacing those fire EMS levies. Because quite frankly, our income tax cannot afford a fire department without those levies. If this income tax doesn't pass and we don't replace those levies or even renew those levies in twenty twenty six, we will be laying off the fire department. I know the gut reaction is to say, you know, cut all the administrative staff or cut on the non-public safety people first. I get that. But even if you gutted City Hall to the absolute minimum staffing, gutted the parks department, gutted the street department, you would still only get two thirds of the way there to keep your fire department and keep your EMS service. And so, yes, I agree with the author of this email that we are presenting hypotheticals, not presenting a comparison of what you spend right now versus what you would spend. It will likely be an increase for many people right off the bat from what you spend today. What we are offering is a savings in the future, essentially. We would, if it is council's wish, we would be happy to add a second calculator to our website that shows a comparison of what you pay now versus what you would pay under the new proposal, if that would be desirable, yeah.
I like that.
Well, because that's going to show that retirees really do have a cost savings, right?
Retirees are the people who will legitimately have an immediate cost savings.
And that's what's on our site.
Yeah, I like the two buttons.
If I may add, that half a percent income increase, to me, it ensures the citizens of our community that everybody is paying a fair share to some degree, if that's the right way to say it. Our retirees are safe from this, but it's time that we go and stay consistent with it. For the last fifty two years, we haven't stayed with inflation. We've done everything we can to get to the point where we're at of sustainability and provide the services that our community has become accustomed to. And I just feel that, you know, all the services that we do provide, whether it's public safety, just trash pickup, our parks, you know, we appreciate those things, but it's time that we realize that we have to make a statement as a community to go forward for the next fifty years to get a half a percent so that we can cover the issues that we're talking about, the need for a new fire station, okay? And repaving or maintenance of our roads. I'm very confident that we are going to continue to sell properties this year. I also see new jobs coming into the city, especially with the Debold Company. They continue to expand. We have new business that is still developed up on the northwest section of Apple Grove and North Main. If you noticed, even we have some demolition going on along Main Street by an entity that purchased the old post office. So again, I just feel a half a percent increase at this time says a statement for our generation and generations to come that we are here to provide them the best way that we can. I see this as a plan of action. Yes, it's hypotheticals, but it is an action plan that we and council can take credit for in getting us forward for the maintenance and infrastructure, for our buildings, for our parks, for our, for our public safety forces, especially for our fire department who is in dire need, going from a volunteer station to a full time response. Because the technology and the, the, their equipment, their vehicles, we, we're not staying consistent in supporting them or how they support us. So I just want to, I think it's a fair share that goes across that our citizens can contribute to this for that half a percent increase.
Second question from the email Chairman Warren sent me was why, since the hypothetical seven point three mils would raise four point eight million, why are we using three point seven as our revenue benchmark when the hypothetical mils would raise more than that? And it's because very similar to when we were talking about the storm sewer switch from a property tax to a monthly fee. We're not trying to raise that higher amount. We're only trying to raise what we raise right now. Essentially, we're making, in this proposal, we're making the political choice to commit to funding our fire department through income tax instead of through property tax. And so that extra one million that they take every year, we're making the political choice to just accept that they are now part of the income tax fund, and they will need that money for the foreseeable future. Whereas in the other scenario, we wouldn't be making that, we would be continuing to try and fund them off property taxes instead. I think those are the main things from the email.
Yeah, thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Thanks.
Some people are listening to our, to our meetings, so that was good. There were some nice questions. And again, we have people that are listening that are experts, kind of in the field of audit and taxation, and so I like when they pose those kind of questions. And thank you for being able to answer them, and we'll catch you guys sooner. You didn't have to do that, but so thank you for that. I think that's helpful, and I think that other button will be really helpful on there so that people can see. The calculator.
Yep, calculator.
Okay, any other questions or concerns, anything?
The big thing I would just add is if people have, you know, we've talked about the section on the website, go and check out the website, utilize a calculator that's there now, utilize a calculator that you'll put up, and that'll give you a real good picture of what this really truly looks like for you as an individual resident. So thank you for having that out there.
Okay, I motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance seven dash twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance seven twenty twenty five?
A resolution directing, it's actually ordinance eight, my mistake.
Oh.
A resolution directing the Board of Elections to place upon the ballot at the primary election to be held on May sixth, twenty twenty five. The question of increasing the city of North Canton's rate of municipal income tax from one point five percent to two percent beginning January first, twenty twenty six for the purposes of general municipal operations, maintenance, new equipment, extension and enlargement of municipal services and facilities, and capital improvements, and declaring the same to be an emergency.
All right.
So this is just the process to actually put this on the ballot, and this allows us to do that. So I motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance eight twenty twenty five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. All right, Liam, would you please read the title of, would this be nine?
Yes. This is a long break.
Details matter.
A resolution stating the intention of City of, of North Canton City Council to not seek renewal or replacement of the city's existing street paving EMS operating and fire suppression operating levies if voters approve a point five percent income tax increase at the ballot box in May twenty twenty five.
Okay, so this is basically, we talked about it a little bit beforehand, we're really saying that we will take away those other renewals if this passes. Okay, so I motion to adopt the second reading of ordinance nine dash twenty twenty five.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, moving on to new business. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance one twenty twenty five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty two of the Planning and Zoning Code from its existing classification to Main Street North.
Okay, and this, we're just moving this to the planning commission.
No, it's coming back from the planning commission.
Well, we do have a public hearing.
Yeah.
Sorry, yeah, you're right, yeah. So I'm going to make a motion to set a public hearing on ordinance one twenty twenty five for March tenth, twenty twenty five at six forty five P M.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'm going to make the motion to postpone from further consideration of ordinance one twenty twenty five for the March tenth, twenty twenty five public hearing. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance two twenty, two twenty twenty five?
An ordinance amending the zoning map of the city of North Canton to reclassify one parcel in the city of North Canton in accordance with the amendment procedure set forth in chapter eleven eighty two of the Planning and Zoning Code from its existing classification to general business B.
Okay, and I'm going to make a motion to set the public hearing of ordinance two twenty twenty five for March tenth, twenty twenty five at six forty five P M as well.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to postpone further consideration of ordinance two twenty twenty five for March tenth, twenty twenty five public hearing.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I have a motion in a second to suspend Council Rule twenty three to allow for consideration of further items that were discussed immediately preceding in the committee of the whole meeting.
So moved?
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance ten twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing the mayor of the city of North Canton to accept the transfer of real property located on Stratavon Drive Northwest in North Canton, Stark County, Ohio, from the North Canton Community Improvement Corporation and decline the same to be an emergency.
Okay, finance property, step.
Okay, I'm just putting properties, getting ready for sale, sell. So I need a motion, I need to get that right. Oh, a motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance ten dash twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll make a motion to suspend the role of council requiring three readings. All in favor?
Aye.
She said, needs to say second.
Oh, you made the motion, I'm sorry, second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make a motion to adopt ordinance ten twenty twenty five under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance eleven twenty twenty five?
An ordinance authorizing appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures and related one time permanent transfers of monies made to various funds for the period beginning January first, twenty twenty five and ending December thirty first, twenty twenty five.
All right, I motion to adopt the first reading of ordinance eleven dash twenty twenty five. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll make the motion to suspend the role of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. And I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance eleven twenty twenty five under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Liam, would you please read the title of ordinance twelve twenty twenty five?
An ordinance amending various provisions of chapter one fifty five personnel regulations, specifically subsection one fifty five point oh four G, part time scheduled compensation of the qualified ordinances of the city of North Canton to add a part time building code inspector and decline the same to be an emergency.
Okay, personnel and safety, yeah.
Looked up that's in the committee meeting, this is our part time person to save us and put us in a good position for that extra help when needed.
When need.
I'll make a motion that we adopt the first reading of ordinance twelve twenty twenty five.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. I'll make the motion to suspend the role of council requiring three readings.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. And I'll make the motion to adopt ordinance twelve twenty twenty five under suspension of the rules.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries. Okay, and.
Were we going to talk about giving the police consultation, and then you also wanted to talk about the other, where did you want to do that? Oh, name check, and then, yeah.
Well, probably, I mean, do we want to discuss that? We can, I mean, it's new business.
Or we do that from the final call for new, final call for new business?
It doesn't, doesn't matter.
Do you want to go there?
Yeah.
I'm going to bring it up on the report, that works for you.
Yeah, that'll work, okay, all right, that works. Liam, if you want to read the preamble for the last portion of public speaks.
At this time, members of the public have signed up to address city council will be called to do so. Each speaker will be given five minutes. Speakers shall be called in the order they signed up. During this section, comments shall be limited to items reasonably under the city's authority. The rules for speaking and the speaker's time will appear on the screens. After you have finished speaking, please remain at the podium to answer questions from officials at the dais. This will serve as the final warning for all speakers. Any violation of the rules will result in ejection from the premises.
Okay, Patterson.
Hey, everybody. Pat Patterson, seventeen fifty fourth Street, Cogga Falls, fifth ward, back in the house. Hope everybody had a good Christmas season, New Year's, off to a good start. One thing I wanted to bring up tonight, something I started actually in twenty twenty three, very, very small scale, continued it last year as well, is a public walk. I'm going to be doing one again on the sixth of April at eight o'clock in the morning. And what it is, it's very informal. Show up, hang out, meet some of your neighbors, take a two, three, four mile walk, see some of the sights around town, whatnot. We had three people, we did, we did it the last Sunday of the year. We had three people, the year before we had four. So, small gathering, I mean, I'm not saying that there's going to be four hundred and eighty-five people there or anything like that. You know, very small thing. Get out, meet your neighbors, get some exercise. Any help I can get from the city, not asking for dollars and cents. We could put, you know, like in the e-newsletter, if we could put a couple, you know, a little verb, something like that would be helpful. Facebook page, anything like that. But yeah, it's a cool thing, like I said, get some exercise, meet some neighbors. And with that, that's what I have tonight. Have at.
All right, April sixth. I'll come out of hibernation by then, so I will, I will join you.
Well, yeah, he says every time, he's like, I'll be there, I'll be there at somewhere.
And he doesn't come, does he?
Is that a Saturday or Sunday?
As long as it's not raining, no, no.
Yeah, Sunday morning.
I'm in on that.
Yeah, like I said, it's, you know, very informal, I mean, we're not going to, you know, you know, point some of the historic sites around town. Because I don't think a lot of people realize the history that is here. I mean, McKinley did a lot of his campaigning for his presidency a mile up the road in Visser Park. A lot of people don't realize that, for one thing.
Maybe we can get the Heritage Society to join in on that.
That's a possibility.
Yeah, all right.
I, I, I can think of at least two members in the room.
Did you mention where you were starting?
The North Canton Y M C I, you did not, thank you, sir. The parking lot behind the Y.
And then do you have a, talking points that you share with them throughout it, or?
I might say, hey, this is, you know, such and such, and this is so and so, but, I mean, it's mainly, I mean, my goal is to get people together. Get people together in a positive way, just to get to know your neighbors. I mean, it seems like our society just doesn't want to do that anymore. I have a problem with that. So, I want to do something, bud, I want to do something about it in my hometown.
I like it. I like it. Okay, any comments, other, other comments, questions? Thanks, Pat, appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you.
So moving to department reports, let's start with Mayor Wilder.
Well, thank you, President Stroy. Just a few things, thank you, Dr. Carl Pace, for your opening prayer and thoughtfulness on guidance on this council. Again, appreciate the comments from the public and their concerns and the discussion from council. Welcome back, Happy New Year. At the end of January, welcome you all back. And that, we had the distinct honor tonight of swearing in six employees at the, for the North Canton Fire Department. Trevor Zinda, for full-time firefighter E M T, was sworn in. Adam Greg Gulow was sworn in as a full-time firefighter E M T. I'll get you the spelling on that, okay? And Ian Bonner, that's I A N, as a full-time firefighter E M T. And we are fortunate to have continued succession plan of leadership with the promotions of firefighter medics to the rank of fire lieutenant. And that went to Ryan Frank, John Kleimbek, and Doug Taylor, who were promoted to the rank of lieutenant. I want to thank council, entire council for supporting that and being there to support the. Starting today, if you didn't see it, our potholes on Main Street are being filled. And they're working, our crew will be working their way through into our neighborhoods as time, as weather permitting, but they're out there trying to take care of the best they can with our potholes. Question came up to me, how are we fixed for salt? Well, check with Mr. Morrow, and we have about eight hundred tons of salt still in our, the civic center, or at the service center. And we have thirteen hundred tons on order expected to be delivered possibly this week. And again, you're probably going to say it, but I'm going to say it too, I can't thank our, the extraordinary efforts of our street and parks and our other service personnel for ensuring that our streets were clear, clean, and safe for travel for our motorists. They did a very good job, as always, and especially for our first responders, that was always one of my concerns, was not that I neglected the public, but we had to make sure our first responders could get to the locations where they could. So I think they did an extraordinary job over the last few days. I agree, Holly, and the other people here at council, that, you know, investing in our streets is, is a matter, not only a matter of infrastructure, but is a commitment. And I believe the presentation by Mr. Young shows that there is a commitment here to go forward with having a balanced budget stewards of our finances and, and having an opportunity that if we can get this half a percent increase passed, where it will hopefully lead us for in the future. And I feel very good about that. You know, these last five or six, going on six years for me, I believe that my mission has been on restoring and rebuilding our community to a certain degree, because I felt that if, if we don't have a good foundation, then we're going to get passed by. And we're just going to stay same old, same old. And, and still balancing, you know, a small-town charm yet that we have, but we have to be progressive and have some growth so that we can maintain the services that we've become accustomed to. And I want to be a part of that, and I'm willing to invest my time in, in helping that. We're going to have some income tax revenue. We have increased property taxes for the revenue for our school district. And, and I, and I'm confident that we're going to sell our properties. And we have millions of dollars that are invested already in our community up north there, almost fifty million, I think, if you looked at all the businesses that are going in up there, and jobs coming into the city. So I think there's a sense of vibrancy and, and willingness to go forward to, to, again, make this a, a, a great community. And it's just, I know, we're going to have to continue to communicate and educate our residents and our citizens on the need for this half a percent. And where it can help us and lead us, you know, for, you know, the betterment of our community, so. I think that's enough for now, okay? Thank you.
Thank you, Mayor, appreciate it. Director of Administration, Catherine.
Hello, thank you, President of Council. I'm writing some notes, because it's beginning of twenty twenty-five, and there's like a million things swirling in my head right now, there are so many things. Some are a little premature to talk about, but we do, we are sitting down and, and starting to lay out the year. So, you know, we do have some exciting projects coming, I'll just give little tips of the icebergs, I think, like, we did receive a capital award for three hundred thousand dollars from the state for an improvement to be made at Price Park, so that'll be, you know, a project I'll be working with, with our superintendent, Brian Hill, in the Parks Department. You know, mentioning a lot of development happening, you know, our, we are trying to do more communications on Facebook and get things out, so Danielle, our social media had posted up at the blizzards coming, not in, you know, the terms of weather, but in yummy blizzards and Dairy Queen and the development that you're going to see happening there. And later on, we'll talk about Chick-fil-A, perhaps, starting the groundbreaking there in April, we're all excited about that. Our economic development specialist, Jason Saget, he's been working hard, doing a lot of things. He has been, he's taken over the C I C, he's going to, he is clerking the C I C now, he also have, be responsible for the Turk and C R A, which is something we do, Tax and Senate Review Council. And Jamie and Matt, you guys are on the, the Housing Council, we have a meeting set there, I think you tentatively set something out for February twentieth, we'll meet at City Hall on that. Jason's also working a lot with, you know, we, we took over our, took back our newsletter, something else new this year, you know, we're, we're doing the newsletter and not paying or losing some of the revenue on ads, the place we were before took a portion of the ad revenue. We are now selling ads, but we are challenged with selling ads. We have not had as much luck as possible, so I thought I would mention it here if anyone knows anyone, and that's what Jason's also doing in his new role of economic development specialist, he's trying to get out, meet all the local businesses, and then while he's also meeting, and what can the city do for you, and how are you doing, and hey, do you want to advertise your business? We reach, what's our reach on that? Twelve thousand, twelve thousand people, you know, I know that school newsletters, church bulletins and things, people are always, realtors are looking for that anywhere from the little business card to a half-page to a full-page ad. So he's, he's also working on, you know, checking in with our commercial realtor, trying to get those properties sold or repurposed into something else, he's got a lot on his plate there. Mayor and I will be meeting tomorrow with one of our community partners, the Y M C A, our other community partners being the library and the Chamber of Commerce, are all starting to talk about twenty-five events. It's not too soon, you know, it's January, but the Y's already got out their race registration and their sponsorship forms for the July fourth race. And so if anybody else, you know, we'll be talking with the J C's again, make sure they're still on board for our traditional parade we'll have in July and whatever else we have going on. Coming up in April, there'll be an Easter egg hunt, you know, it was the first year that the city, you know, worked on that, because the J C's did that for years, and Meyer stepped up and they told us they'll step up again, so they provide everything. They provide a team that does the work, they give the candy, they give the eggs, it'll be over there at the Price Park like we did, hopefully it won't be a trench down for like it was last year. And then we've got Arrowhead that's managing this now, managing Civic Center, and they're going to, in addition to the egg hunt, they're going to hold like a, like a breakfast here, with a bunny breakfast and food. So I wanted to mention that, coming up February nineteenth, Arrowhead is doing an open house. So the event manager, Carrie Schaefer, from Arrowhead, that is managing the Civic Center, is hope, is going to host something, February nineteenth, open to the public in the afternoon, it's on their Facebook page, to, to come in, it's in the evening, I think it's like four-thirty to six-thirty. And she's going to set up the Civic Center to show what it can look like, it's a beautiful event center, and now we have a professional who can host events, and she's going to have that. So a lot of things going on for twenty twenty-five, and we're just, you know, managing everybody and starting employee evaluations to get goals set up for the year, and all the good stuff it takes to run a city, so stay tuned, that's all.
All right, awesome. Finance, Gina.
Do you want to go? Get, get part of it. Okay, you want to say? Well, I'm going to defer to Jim, and we're going to start talking about numbers, so I know it's everybody's favorite.
According to report with Jim, that's what I'm saying. So, I'll just start, basically, how we do, income tax for the year was up two point six percent. We, and that's with four of the top five individuals, accounts that moved out of North Canton, so we didn't expect that, but it's still obviously increased, you know, two point six percent, so we'll be happy with that, that's an increase of two hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars on income tax, for reference. Talk about, you know, general fund, adding balance, kind of said, did an excess of two hundred and twenty dollars, we talked about that tonight. It's about a forty-eight, forty-nine percent carryover, percentage of revenue. Going through our budget talks, twenty-five percent is usually the number that we'd have, so free access there, so whatever we do with that, set through with that, be good. Terms of investments, we had an increase of eighty-five thousand dollars to our interest this year from last year, which is great. We're estimated to bring in about six hundred and thirty thousand dollars in interest next year. Current portfolio yield, around three percent, a little under, so we continue to take our investment portfolio out, because right now it's about twenty-three years, and it's kind of short-term there, so. If we look for that to increase over the next few years. Water, so we increased about fifty, fifty individuals for sales, in terms of customers. We had about a seven percent increase in total water revenue, we attribute five percent of that to a five percent water rates increase. And then we had a, our box sale, box water sales was up pretty good this year, so that equates almost five hundred thousand dollars in increase in water. Every time I do this, auto pay customers is, you know, a big hit, since, since we had started doing Voice Cloud and Union Link, our new water application. Four hundred eighty-three individual, or, yeah, four hundred, and we increased from thirty-one hundred individuals to almost thirty-six hundred on auto pay, which is great, since twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, so that's, that's been very helpful. So, yeah, I think that pretty much sums it up, from what you know, with the ads, anything?
Awesome, thank you, that's good news. Okay, let's go with Deputy Director.
So my big I T project for twenty twenty-five in the budget, you all were gracious enough to approve getting a consolidated asset management and work order system for all the city departments. We got six demos in the end, and ultimately chose a company called Catalyst, they corrected me, Catalyst. And we had our kickoff meeting with them, we're in implementation, we hope to be done by March, so that we want to have a full year for budget time in twenty-five, but then in twenty-six, we'll have a pretty close to a full year for reference back for better budget planning. That's that. Second, if anybody visits City Hall in February, please excuse our dust. We have a project going on in the lobby to bring some improved history and public art to the lobby space that is currently very empty and white. And we are partnering, in addition to bringing back some of the historic things from City Hall, such as the original village map, which there's a mural version of here, and all the mayor's portraits, we're also partnering with the Hoover Historical Society and the Heritage Society for a history of North Canton display. So hopefully that'll make our lobby feel a little less clinical, and a little more welcoming and like a community space. And then the last item on my list is, we're finishing up the R F P and getting ready to bid the City Hall H V A C and police renovation project. We're trying to get going on that very quickly, because we've been warned that the H V A C components have a six-month lead time, and we're hoping to get that done this fall, when it's not too hot and not too cold, that we can all keep working without dying at our desks while the H V A C is plugged in. But I understand some members of council have potential changes they'd like to see to the scope of that project. Open the floor.
I think, and I, and I could be wrong, but I thought before Christmas, maybe we were talking about having a consultant of some sort come in and do what they did with the fire station? I think that we thought that, to be fair, to spend the, the dollars and the resources on experts who could kind of share their thoughts and evaluate, I don't think it's ever been done. And we know now that with some of the results from the fire station, that we've actually saved money, we've been able to engage more, more firemen and job, hopefully, retainment, development, and we've changed hours and shifts, and we've helped with overtime, and so a lot of good has really come from that. And so I know that was one thing that we were maybe saying, and I don't know if we've gone any further with looking for someone or not, or an agency to do that, but then I thought, so do we hold off on the full-scale H V A C before we would get that report back? And so maybe start on the one part and then wait to see, because maybe they would have, like, different ideas about, and I know we had, you know, some really great police feedback as well about what they would like to see, but, you know, these are the experts, supposedly, and they had really good ideas on design and structure with the firehouse. So, what thought?
And I, I want to really, and I've said this several times, I want to make sure the longevity of the project is solid. I mean, I, I don't want to put in that much money and then ten years from now have another issue where, where we're going to move somewhere else. You know, my, my feelings of City Hall, it's, it's a money pit, but it's, it's fine, I mean, it accommodates, but I just want to make sure the longevity of the improvements is going to be there.
So are we discussing about putting out the requests on this restructure, which would then move, replacing the H V A C to next year, and readjusting the project for this year, to put out a request, receive those requests, review those requests, decide which direction we want to go, and postpone this whole project to next year?
I think we're just kind of opening. I think we're just kind of opening it up for a conversation at this point.
Yeah, because I, I think that's where this would end up going is.
I guess I interpreted it from ours, cutting out the police department renovations, but continuing with the HVAC replacement.
That would be good for.
Yeah.
That's what I recall talking about before the end of the year.
Well, and I don't know if it was a complete removal until, you know, and I know, and you know, we had discussed the fire station. For whatever reason, it took a longer time to get that back. We don't know how long it's going to take. I feel like you have done a lot more due diligence prior to what, you know, might be very helpful for the, for the police, um, changes. And so that could happen sooner than we think and things could move forward. But I know that you needed to move forward on the HVAC. So, you know, I don't want it stated that like we're not doing the police renovations. Just maybe taking that step back to say, can we have that assessment first?
If this rolls into 26, will there be funds available for that renovation?
Why wouldn't they just move forward? If we didn't use them this year, they're only allocated.
I don't think we're going to submit it on anything else. I mean.
So each, each fiscal year runs on its own. So would have to be a whole new budget for next year?
Well, that's capital, not revenue. So I think it would just stay on the capital side.
But I think there's a good chance that we would still use a decent amount of the dollars.
Oh, sure.
Based on the report and kind of longevity. So.
The funds that are set aside for the police department renovations are from the sale of the 1200 block, two buildings, remember? And can only be used for police or fire renovations or to repay the debt.
Right.
They can't be reallocated.
We couldn't use that fund to pay for the consultant.
I need to talk louder from here. Okay. Yeah. And they, so they could be used to pay for the consultant, correct? They could. Okay. So that would have to come out of.
Out of that one point six that we just talked about that we need for streets.
Yeah.
Yeah.
I guess, um, I just want to make sure I understand too. You were saying like operationally, we want the consultants to look at, or space wise.
Isn't it a both? Isn't that what they did for fire?
Fitch did operations.
Didn't the architect do more the size requirements for the fire department?
But wasn't that based on some of what Fitch said?
I thought some of that was in.
I felt like it was definitely a combination. It's, when he presented, it sure seemed like that.
Yeah.
It was like, this is the, what you need in the building for them to be safe.
You don't need more than X number of people on a shift at a time, which influences the number of dorms. Then you don't need more than X apparatus, which influences the number of garage spaces.
Yeah.
I mean, I would say that's tied in pretty well.
Yeah. So what do you need from us if we decide to move forward with this?
We'd have to get some quotes because we don't have this budget in for the consultant.
Okay.
We'll have to look at that and then we'll try to come back for appropriation. Get a timeline at the same time.
I guess for now I'd just ask for a case vote or some kind of, you know, to justify that it is the majority of council's desire to hire a consultant to evaluate the police department before moving forward with renovations.
For it to be worded that we're getting quotes and then we come back and vote again.
Yeah.
I see it as two different things. I see the layout of the police department not part of the structure for efficiencies within the police department. I see that as an architect versus consultant. For operations. And I don't see these as, as combined as one. So are we saying that the police department needs to be reviewed? Do we want to add that to the budget? We're just looking for a construction quote and options for what that construction might look like. We already have the funds budgeted for it. Should we get an architect to decide what we need for efficiencies? We're not changing the number of police officers, not changing shifts, we're not changing sergeants, we're not changing rotations. We're not changing the fact that they're out on the streets 24/7.
My immediate concern is, is the structure. I mean, right now.
Police structure or?
The structure of the facility.
Yeah. You mean the layout of what would be done. Yeah.
Yeah. Because that's, that's where for me, the longevity comes in of, you know, i- is this what the police really wants? Is this, you know, I, I know it's going to be improved, but, um, what changes are going to happen 15 years down the line? The road, 10, 15 years, are things going to be different? Because 10, 15 years ago, our fire department plans were different. You know, facilities changed over that. Decontamination came, um, you know, there, there could be other things. So I, I really would like some sort of longevity study done on, on if we spend X amount of dollars, how long is that going to last? There's, I mean, there's obviously some facility weaknesses where we've discussed it before, you know, there's one entrance for, um, both a person reporting a prime crime and somebody that committed the crime. And that's crazy to think of. So I mean, there's, there's simple things like that. But, um, the layout of the building, I, I just want to make sure the longevity is there. If we're going to spend over a million dollars on something, I want it to be one, what the police want and two, that it's going to last X amount of years.
It's half a million, right?
We had a big meeting and we, the police got everything they want. I think it's a waste of money to hire another consultant. They don't come cheap. And we know about the deficiencies in the police department and they were all to be corrected. Are they corrected to have the, you know, the police chief okay the corrections, correct? Have you seen the plan? We've seen the plans. We've worked through a few different layouts of them. I think we are going to the next portion of this with the request for proposal is to find an architect to iron out the last steps in this.
So we have building signs, which, um, shared with you all back in December, the puzzle now would be the next step is we need an architect to make final construction drawings that are sufficient to A, bid out to a contractor and B, file for a building. Um, our, for the issue of longevity, our biggest concern is locker room space. We, we don't see the officer corps drastically increasing the, you know, our need for office space would drastically increase. And even if it did in the current design, there's still more than a thousand square feet left over in that bottom floor. The, the big question is how many officers are we going to hire over the next 50 years, which is going to be, none of us know. If, we have no idea what's going to happen to increase the population or decrease the population or change the layout of the city.
I just think, you know, spending whatever amount it is, 30,000, 40,000, 50,000 for a consultant, we already know the results. We know what is at City Hall. We know where we can expand and not expand and stuff of that nature. I say go with the designs you have, see what keep the options and go from there.
Has there, has there been any updates to the, the, the designs lately? I mean.
Since December?
Yeah, okay. Yeah. I mean, I personally, I'd kind of like to walk through and see them as the layout goes. That's just me though. Yeah.
So when you did the operations for the fire station, what, what initiated that, you know, and have we ever done one for police?
Sometime thirteen, twenty thirteen, sometime shortly after the departure of Hoover. The city had some sort of citywide.
It was a performance audit.
Audit was conducted.
Every department.
There was a performance audit and out of that performance audit came the change in the rank structure within the police department. That originally was two lieutenants, four sergeants. Was the original basis of that. Then through the attrition of time, we went to one lieutenant. As we have evolved through this process, we did add an additional charge sergeant in order to have two supervisors assigned to the shifts. For continuity of coverage between those shifts. And then at this point, we are looking towards this year, the potential of a assistant chief.
Right.
But phasing out one of the other supervisors.
Phasing out another supervisor, phasing out one of the other supervisor spots. So no additional personnel, just a change in the structure.
Yep.
What brought the fire department more to head was quite simply the math just wasn't adding up. So we had, you know, lots of overtime, but mathematically many more firefighters on payroll than would have ever been needed to cover every shift. And so then digging into that, that led to sort of the discoveries of, we had a lot of these sort of volunteers that were still hanging on that would, you know, come to trainings and that was kind of it and taking hours, but not really picking up shifts. And that was leading to this, okay, we've got 40 people on payroll, yet I still can't find anybody to fill a shift. Well, cause we've got 20 of them aren't actually qualified to pick up a shift. They're just volunteers. So. That's what sort of started the ball rolling with the fire was how do I have 40 people and still can't fill a shift?
That's why I was asking to be clear, what were you looking for? Cause I hear Matt, you're saying it's a lot of money to put into an old building. And you don't want to waste money. Um, and then also saying, but are we being, you know, efficient with the, um, operations?
Right.
Um, so to the point on the performance audit, um, you know, the Ohio Auditor's State Office does a performance audit. And I just like did a little Google search here on, um, you know, funding for that. It does, I don't know if you know anything about that Gina, but local government services section of the auditor's office can help identify cost sharing opportunities for grant funding through the local government innovation fund.
I'm not aware of any grants, but that's been a really long time since I've worked there.
If, if that's, if that's, I guess I'm trying to like, what direction are we looking at? Do you want an operational review? And then that would be a performance audit versus do you want a space, you know, architectural? Are we being, you know, efficient with the money, putting it into this old building and will it be good enough in the end?
Where the architects and the engineers come together to give us the actual plan of what.
That's what I would like to see. Yeah.
I think that's the next step is the architect, the request for proposal.
Right.
So we don't really need to have that consultant.
I don't know. I, I think, I mean, 11 years is a long time. I like what, I like the results. We have spent consulting money on about every other aspect. And when we talk about safety being our most important, we have not. So we're talking about a city plan. We've done a park plan. We've done an economic development plan. We have done the fires. We have done everything else. And I get it. People can think consultants are a waste of money, but we, we have spent those monies and, and a lot of times with, with some, some decent results. But make no mistake, we have spent those monies. And now we are saying that on our, on our biggest, one of our biggest cost areas and an area that we're talking about putting, you know, as a, as a building facility, another million dollars into, you can look at the budget, you see where we spend our monies. And we're, we're really thinking that we don't need something after 10, 11 years. And it's not about their deficiencies. I don't even, I don't know why that word even came up. It's not about police deficiencies. It's about looking at things. I mean, we don't do a strategic plan. You know, most organizations, if you're a for-profit nonprofit, you do a strategic plan and it's not five years anymore, it's three years. So if this hasn't been evaluated, why wouldn't, why wouldn't we do that at a time when, when we can and before we're spending a lot of money on their facilities?
So what, what's the timeline on, on the RFP coming up?
So next week, I'd really like to put out at a minimum the HVAC part because we're gonna, with state posting requirements, we're going to be into May, June before we've awarded that contract, which really runs us up tight on any chance of getting equipment delivered to the fall, right? So if we add in another, depending on what the cost is, RFP bidding process for a consultant and then time to do that, you're, you're looking at next year for renovations to occur. We'll, we'll spend two months in the posting and selection process and then I'd say probably at least three or four in the evaluation.
So can we continue with the RFP for the HVAC system and continue discussions on everything else? Is that fair?
Could, yeah.
Okay.
Essentially the clarification I'm looking for from council is do, do you want us to move forward with just the HVAC or with the whole front?
I, I say that is the common sense response and this, I mean, I don't think, I don't want anybody to think that we're not going to continue to make the police improvements. I think we just want more information on how it's going to flow through.
This is for entire City Hall, right?
The HVAC is for the entire City Hall.
Well, yeah, cause I think if you split it up, it's going to be so much more costly in two parts than one.
Yeah.
Cause that is a lot of work.
And when the architect, um, you know, looked at the space, they, they did inquire like, are, are, you know, are we, are we doing the HVAC? Is someone else doing the HVAC? Cause if they're moving walls and they're moving air handles, this has got to be coordinated together.
Yeah.
So that's why it came into.
So that's the time and strength.
So in essence, they can't do the HVAC until next year.
Right.
I mean, you're going to incur additional costs.
It goes up every year.
Yeah.
As a person who works that, please don't.
And we all sweat to death also. We're all working from home.
But if we delay the renovation to next year, you will incur additional costs redoing some HVAC again.
But you, you said, you know, walls and, you know, we don't know where they're going to push new stuff and stuff of that nature. And, you know, I, I think you have to hold off on it all.
So Ms. Warren, do you think we need to have this evaluation of the police department that you're looking for before we do renovations?
I don't know. That's why.
I don't see a correlation there.
Right. Like that's what I'm like, I would, I still want the evaluation.
I don't think there's an urgency in that. I mean, it would be nice. I think it's good to look at every department, but the, the thing in front of us that's probably most pressing is the HVAC system and improvements.
I don't want to delay the HVAC.
Right.
But how much more, if we redo the police department and stuff, will it cost us more money with the, with the HVAC?
That's why I'm the hesitation.
You know, if they have to move walls or whatever down.
You don't do the renovations at the, at the same time you do the HVAC, then yes, there'll be more cost incurred down the road. Reconfiguring the HVAC that we're trying to get replaced this year.
That's what I don't want to happen.
That's why we need an RFQ from the architect to move forward. The review of the police.
Well, let's keep looking. We can do both. I mean, they go hand in hand.
You have a little presence, right?
I, I mean, I would say let's, let's move forward with the RFQ, um, on the, on, on all that. And let's look at the, we don't have to, we're, we're asking for a request for proposal.
Right.
We don't have to pull the trigger on it if we don't like it.
Right.
So let's, let's move forward with that. Let's get the plans. Let's look at it and then evaluate, correct? I mean, that's what I would say.
We have the plans.
We have the plan.
Right. So I guess what I'm hearing is, is so, and I think it's as Dave, you brought up, it's two separate things. So we have a performance of the police department, which I think they do a fantastic job. Maybe there are tweaks, but I guess within that I hear from Ben that there's likely going to be no structure of the force change in theory. So I guess you could also say then we know essentially the space that's required. If we have an architect that would know, you know, based on these employees, is this the, is this space adequate? And I think what you're looking for is five years, 10 years, 15 years from now, is this space going to be adequate? Or are we going to be spending another million dollars in 10 years?
Correct.
And perhaps that's what the architect would tell us.
That's, that's why I'm saying before.
To that point, these plans have been drawn up by an architect, correct?
Correct.
And I guess to that.
He was trying to find them on server for me, but I believe we have 40 lockers in the new plan and currently we only have 29 officers.
So.
I don't remember exactly the number of lockers. I know the last layout that we came up with, with the locker rooms was having. I know the last layout that we came up with, with the locker rooms was having two separate locker rooms for male and female.
Which we don't currently have now.
And then we're going to two restroom type combination, shower restroom, individual unisex type bathrooms between those two locker rooms. So the restrooms become separate from the locker rooms, but they're adjacent to them. So they become multipurposeable. And we were adding an additional, basically through the renovation, it's taking the single restroom that's in the chief's office, moving it around the corner to make it more functional and accessible to another portion of it. So that gives us an additional restroom space to be available to us. We were adding an additional space for a multi-function area to include our roll call area, basically where the old storage is downstairs now that is being cleaned out. The last request I had put to them was, don't give me specific walls down there. Give me an open structure plan that I can put up temporary walls to create office space as needed, but give me the infrastructure of the electric outlets on the walls, the computer connections on the walls. That's the space there, I believe Ben is referring to, is that big wide open space that needs to be in conjunction with the air handling system. I mean, at the beginning of last week, after the holiday weekend, we were wearing gloves, coats and hats in our offices and mine and the detective bureau downstairs. Upstairs surprisingly had heat, but downstairs is our office space, we didn't. Now flip that to this week, we are turning pans on downstairs this week because of the air handling system. So that is the importance of this air handling system with what you were talking about. I hear two different things. I hear the evaluation of this space. We've looked at the functionality of the space. You're welcome to come in. We can talk to you about what we've come to. We may still do a little bit more conversation on this, but you're welcome to come in to the department. We can show you how we discussed the layout of it and the practicality of it for us, the evaluation of what we do or how we do our processes. That goes right along with the innovation thought of, is there innovations? Is there things that we can do to improve our processes? I'm open to that, but they are two separate things.
Yeah.
Yeah, agreed.
And Ben has the latest rendition up there that was, we've been through a couple of different conversations on this and we, our conversations have also kind of adapted to, we only have so much money to spend on this project. What is the most that we can get out of spending that money in the best way possible?
So the, the quick version of the summary of changes. So first for dispatch, right now our dispatch center has our only employee who requests an ADA accommodation and she cannot access a bathroom without going up or down a flight of stairs because of, there's some weird like four-step things in the police department that are in there. The chief currently has private bathrooms. We're gonna sort of take out some old jail cells that used to be here and make one, a one single stall bathroom directly across from dispatch and a small kitchenette for them, protecting them night shift now when you, we only have one person, but it's not as far of a walk to a kitchen to microwave your dinner. It's just across the hall. So that's sort of dispatch here in the middle. For police offices, sort of on the edge here right now, this is their report area and then they have sort of four offices clustered in the corner. They're going to turn their four offices into an L here on the outside and then their report area is going to be turned into two interview rooms more for the victims and the public. So you come in the front door city hall and then right into an interview room. In contrast, if you're coming because you were invited by a police officer, escorted, we bring you in this back door here and then we have two interview report rooms in the back here that we can bring you in this side door and you never have to go through the lobby of the city hall. So that's sort of their office space changes. In the back here, this space is currently a very large roll call room. And so we're sort of stealing space from that roll call kitchenette room to expand the locker room. So right now there's one single bathroom here on the end. If we push into that roll call room, we'll create a second unisex bathroom and space for a women's locker room. If you've ever been in the men's locker room, which I know most of the public hasn't, but it's laid out very strangely and really limits the number of lockers you can fit in. There's sort of a weird wall in the middle here. They're going to take that out and just make one big locker room. And so this gets us to 37 lockers, not 40. But again, currently we only have 29 officers total and one of those is the chief of police who has his own office and probably doesn't need a locker. One of them is the lieutenant who will have his own office, probably doesn't need a locker. So plenty of space for some pretty significant expansion of the city's police force. And then sort of this big open space, which right now we at city hall refer to as the cage because it is a bunch of two-by-four and chicken wire storage areas that look like cages, will become their new sort of roll call training room. We'll put their report workstations on this back wall for just an officer on duty filling out his reports. And then like I said, there's this 1,000 square feet still left over that isn't used over here on the side of that big empty space.
So it's just making the area work better, flow better, work more efficiently. Because to your point, Matt, and we deal with this every day, we come down to Steph's just to go to lunch or come back and, you know, these are our neighbors we live around and they're giving a report and they're sitting there with an officer and sometimes there's a child crying and there's not a lot of privacy.
It's crazy, right.
And it's very awkward. You walk by and go, jeez, I hope that's not my neighbor and I don't think they really want me to know this situation right now. So I mean, there's that and then there's, I hear what you're saying on is the department operating efficiently. You know, again, if you want us to, if you want to go forward with, you know, allowing this and getting the HVAC fixed so we can all and.
Well, it's just, it's compared to sometimes, just like we do a yearly audit, you know, it's interesting. But, you know, every year we get excited about that. When you pass your audit, it's a stamp of like, hey, you're doing a good job. And from the consultants that we have had throughout our city, a lot of really good ideas have come forth that we wouldn't have thought of.
On the auditor's site right now, Stephanie, it does say that audits run anywhere from $10,000 to $100,000, just depending on how large the scope is. It does say that if you are narrowly focusing it to just a certain department like a police department, it would be less expensive than a citywide review of all operations. So if you want us to just gather that, then again.
No, why, are you, are you just on that site or is that just you just Googled real quick and this site popped up?
That's the state auditor's site that does performance audits.
Okay. But there also could be someone like an independent.
Or an external one.
That we could, we could use.
We could also do that, yeah.
But it could be just a stamp of approval and saying, hey, this is running efficiently or have you thought? And giving some of those ideas. I think that's very different than an internal look and see versus numbers popping up on your Excel spreadsheet, like something doesn't make sense. So I don't think it's a bad time to do that. It has been, you know, over 10 years again with, with that audit that probably wasn't as much as like a Fitch audit as far as intensity. So, you know, and I know we try to do employee surveys and we talk about engagement and why people leave and why people stay and how they're doing their job and all that factors into those reports and it's important.
So are you saying run these concurrently? Do this upgrade while also seeking performance?
Well, I think really, yeah, I mean, I think why not? But I also think let's get proposals and let's see what's out there and then we can decide.
I think we should just go with the building and the architecture and go forward with that. If you would like to do an assessment, do it next year, but I don't see how this.
It doesn't. I'm not saying it does. I'm saying they run concurrently. I'm saying go ahead, but there's nothing wrong with evaluating as well. It doesn't cost that much money. We're not talking about a million dollars. But that's what we are talking about for the building structure.
That's an investment. I understand that.
Yeah.
Okay.
And people.
But they're going to be here for another 10 years. We're, what, what?
What's?
I don't see, I don't see us building a new safety center because we missed, we, if we were going to do that, it should have been a combination, I would think.
But that's not what I'm talking about.
And I don't want to go to the voters for, for something. And well, I just feel that what, what we have in place and looking at, going with the architecture and the floor plan is, is what we should be focusing on. But I, I understand that if you like an assessment, I tried to get that when I came into office and it didn't go very far with.
Well, then maybe it's on the bench, so I don't know why we'd have to delay it. I don't think the police are going to be too taxed with working with the architects. That isn't going to be their role and responsibility. So this will be something that's very different.
These guys are going to be doing their job.
Right.
But this is, this is two things. We're talking about two things.
Right.
To the mayor's point, first off, I, I don't think that any performance audit is going to wildly change what we're doing here. I, I think the need still exists. We have female police officers who don't have locker rooms. We have space that we can move into. I, I don't see this widely changing. We're not going to be building another police department separate from city hall. This needs to move forward, especially here that we've got employees that are wearing gloves to stay warm. That's unacceptable. So this needs to move forward. If you want to do, to the mayor's point, a review of the operations of the police department, which I don't think would have a whole lot of bearing on this, then let's do that. And to the mayor's point, we can do that next year, but these are two separate things. And I think we are completely confusing the fact that it is two separate things. That's just my point of view.
No, I don't, we're not confusing them. I'm on the same page. I'm not saying one needs to be done, but I'm saying why can't we get proposals for, we already know where, if we're moving forward with this, the money's budgeted, we have the, we have the drawings. My issue was never with as much the architect and I knew we had all that. Mine is with, I think, just operations. It's just, we did it with the fire department. It's our largest expense. Why are we not also doing it with the police? We don't know what it will change and we don't know the monies that it's going to cost. I mean, that's the other thing, we're going in blind. You're saying, well, put a back burner. Well, we just moved forward $1.6 million. So we're talking possibly $10,000 or $20,000.
Okay, but that's not budgeted for 25. You need to pull it out of something else. You're going to have to cut something out.
What about the $1.6 million we just moved forward?
He's going for the rose.
Yeah. $1.6 million?
Now, I, you know, as long as, is the, I, I don't think any, any, I would assume, I will say, I don't think the strategic advice is going to change the layout significantly.
No, I don't think so.
And it's not a space issue, it is a layout issue. It is a cluster there. It, it, it's, it's a layout issue. So, I mean, I'm okay with moving the facility plan forward. That, that kind of makes sense. I don't want to, I don't want to have a evaluation of the police department that would slow the HVAC system and everything else and affect that. I don't think that's fair to anybody.
I don't think they are going to.
Right. But that's, so I want to make sure if, you know, what I would like to see honestly is, is let's move the RFP forward, let's keep the strategic talk on the table, but we don't have to pull the trigger on that right now. It doesn't have to be.
No, I'm just saying we could start getting quotes. We don't even know what a quote is.
We could, we could just look at it, but that's, the, the priority would be moving forward the HVAC system and.
Yeah, and I don't think that was ever in, wondering if we were doing that or not.
So are we all okay with that then? Is that, does that sound good with everybody? Okay.
So with the HVAC, that's going to be done for that.
Well, yeah, we'll get the RFPs.
And the building. So all, so there won't be two half and half another time. It's all the whole building.
Yeah, yeah. Yeah. I mean, you got, the floor's open, whatever you guys are talking, I mean, let's, that's what I think.
Here's a thought. So this was nothing that we, I mean, this, this started as a department report that has gone into what, a half hour discussion? Do we, I mean, do we just move forward with what he presented? They're going to get the request for the HVAC system and for the construction of the revamping of the police department? And how about this, what if we come back at the next committee of the whole meeting and we discuss under Councilman Lithney's Department of Personnel, we can discuss doing an evaluation.
Or at some point, there doesn't have to be a timeline on it.
But that, but I mean, come back and we can then get quotes at that point.
That's what I think, yeah.
Yeah.
Except I did this.
What's that?
Except you did this.
But it's interesting that the mayor, like you said, you did want to do that when you first came into office. So it's not a new idea and you've been doing it. You've been doing it with a lot of departments and you just did it with fighter.
Well, let's keep the discussion going.
But they were two different things. I don't think anyone was ever talking. I mean, it was actually you, Matt, that said you weren't in favor of moving the HVAC forward for both things.
Without longevity.
Because you wanted longevity.
Yeah, I want to see.
Well, no mayor or no architect can tell you that something's going to be in business for the next 20 years.
Well, they could tell you that the layout's going to last for 20 years and that's what.
They can tell you the layout.
Well, I think that we saw that there was extra space in there.
Yeah, that was obvious.
And when you really think about it, you know, okay, so there's room for 37 lockers. I mean, you don't have 37 employees in cubicles. They're out in police cars and they're not even all working at the same time.
Plus Ben took Frank's locker away from them, so.
Yeah, see, we're guys.
Yeah.
You can have it until we get to 37, or 38 of them.
Does that conclude your department report, Ben? Because that took forever. Yeah. All right.
We're taking time away from you next week, so.
All right, Council Clerk Liam.
Well, for my hour-long report, no report.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right. All right, let's move on to council reports. Start with Gina.
All right, well, I had a whole lot I was going to talk about tonight. No, I'm just kidding. I, I don't have a report. I do want to thank, in the vein of talking about the, the police department, I do want to thank the police department. I got to thank you from a resident on Woodrow. Apparently we're continuing our monitoring of speeders on Woodrow, so just want to thank you very much for that. And beyond that, I really don't have anything else to report, so I'll yield back my time.
All right, David.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, for bringing up the promotions as chairman of personnel and safety. I think it should look like that. Chief Kramer has the staff, he has the supervision that he needs to run his 24/7, 365-day operation. And I think we put him in that position to be successful, one more hurdle to overcome. I know that now is the time for administration and working on reviews for the employees. I go through the same thing where I'm at in private sector working and they are very difficult to put together and a lot of time goes into them. And I challenge you to turn those reviews into something, moving the employees to help find goals for them this year to be more productive, more efficient and for the rest of the managers and department heads to do the same for their employees. We've got a great city, our number one asset is our employees and this review needs to be taken seriously and used to help the employees. Along the lines of the newsletter, real quick, I had a thought for you as you're looking for advertisers to help fund that. We have quite the list of registered contractors for residents that can.
Fantastic idea.
That can, that would know that they're registered. If they want to advertise there, maybe one of the, the more talented people on staff could come up with a little logo to put with them and saying that they are registered. It's protecting the, the residents. That registered contractor is getting the correct permits, they have insurance, they have the liability insurance, they have their workers comp and the residents are protected and utilizing that. And it would be a way to maybe bring some awareness to those registered contractors. Just a thought that I had if you were given your report.
Good idea. All right, most of that's all I have. Thank you. Making sure I'm getting all my notes.
I'm just making sure I made all my notes. Yep, thanks.
Yeah, I just want to say thank you to the residents who reached out to me. It's always nice when residents do that. And to Catherine and Matt and some others for helping them with their situations that they had going on. And also, since Dave, you just brought up the performance review process. Catherine, that's something that you kind of brought to life when you came here. And so I'm sure that's a big sense of pride for you to be talking about that now. And it is, that is an important element to bring to the team. So just wanted to recognize you for that.
Thank you, because what Dave said, our employees are our biggest assets, you know? We can have a lot of equipment sitting around, and nobody's running it. But you got to have good people that know what they're doing. And so we try to develop them and encourage them, and thank you.
That's it.
All right, John, our word for.
Okay, first of all, I want to thank all of you that showed up today for council meeting. We appreciate it, and we do listen to you. I had a couple, I was up at City Hall last week. And it really made, if the council haven't been up to City Hall, I hadn't been up in a month or two. And I went in there, and boy, they've changed a lot up there. And it really looks good, so hats off to them. You've changed things. I got a couple phone calls this week from residents. And they, one wasn't from the ward, and I think two were from my ward. And they asked me a question, and I didn't know, and I reached out to Liam. They wanted to know if the demolished old post office, if the city was paying for that. Okay? And we are not paying for the demolition of that building.
What was that again, John?
They wanted to know who was paying to demolish the post office.
And you said again?
Not the city.
It's not the city.
Yeah.
I want that clear.
Not our property.
It's not our property. It's not our city. And there were at least three people who wanted to know that. Had another call from a lady who was having problems with Kimball. Okay? They're picking up her garbage, but not picking up her recycling.
Sometimes they come back.
They haven't come back. What Kimball gave them as an excuse was, well, the driver didn't have it on the GPS.
Put it on the GPS.
The pickup, you know, on the GPS. So she said, can you put it on there? Well, call the city. Well, we don't have someone working for us that handles that type of stuff.
We just direct those calls to Kimball.
We direct them back to Kimball, and I told her, and she was somewhat happy. I have not called her. I'm due to call her, I think, Thursday or Friday, to see if they picked it up. Okay? Then I got a, thank you for the street department handling that one problem about an easement and stuff of that nature where there wasn't an easement. But, you know, they're out there, and they are calling. I am currently with Matt. We're going to set up coffee with council again. With the election coming up and stuff, we want to explain what you heard today. And it'll work out for us. Other council people want to get in on it, we can always talk about it. But those are always good, and I don't want to, I think we're going to talk about having a base race this time. Again, I saw people patching roads this week, today. They were on West Maple, okay? I'm glad they did some on Main Street because there are, it's a terrible area up there. But we do have a grant to cover a lot of that, you know? And why waste it where we could do other roads and stuff of that nature? But they were working hard on there. I watched them for a while. It was just down the corner here. And they were working hard. But I want to thank the mayor for the swearing-in of the fire people today. That was great, and that's about it. But thank you, everybody.
All right. Thanks, John. Stephanie.
Okay, I really noticed the Facebook, increasing presence and awareness from streets to fire to, a deer was saved by, was it the police?
Fire.
Was it fire?
Each had their chance.
Okay. He was out in the water, and that was a touching story. I feel like that could have made the nightly news.
Channel 5 the next day?
Was it? Okay. And I think your policeman who was shot, he was on Channel 5 news one day.
Three different articles.
Okay.
Still makes steps forward, and then he discovers that he has taken steps back.
Sorry to hear that. The story was really nice on the news, though.
His temperament is boarding up very strongly.
That's great. Well, good. And, yeah, let's just continue. Like you said, John, that was great. Evaluations matter. Development matters, and looking at programs. And, you know, one of the reasons that today we brought on new firemen was because of that Fitch report and looking at that. And that event tonight wouldn't have happened without that assessment being done. So who knows, different things. And like you said, you changed the amount of the tenants and different things. When the last proposal was done, things do change, and it matters. And it's part of making sure the departments are working to their best potential, so, okay?
Thank you, Stephanie. Christina.
No report.
All right, I'll go. Thank you, Mayor, for the ceremony. I thought that was real nice. And the turnout was fantastic, so thank you for that. Thank you, Ben, and administration, and finance, and anybody that was involved in putting together that slideshow for the streets. That is, to me, that was one of the most important parts of the levy that we're going to put forward, that we didn't have that shortfall on the streets. As Holly said, I mean, some of the streets are falling behind, and we can't afford to have them fall behind any more than what they are. To that fact, thank you, street crew, for doing an incredible job so far this year. Record cold and everything, and they kept up, driving from township to city. You can tell immediately when you come into North Canton, and you feel safe right away. So I've heard so many comments about that this winter so far. So thank you. That's all I have. Final call for new business?
One I forgot to mention, this Sunday, the Chamber is sponsoring the first annual Pizza Palooza at the high school, and they have, I think, 25 different vendors. So I don't know if there's still tickets available.
I believe there are.
They're sold out.
Wow.
I got tickets going.
They are still looking for help, so.
Ooh, that's a bad group.
Yeah, we had a lot of shit to go volunteer for.
I forgot to mention, if I'm being economic developer, since I'm somewhat retired now, I'd be more than happy to knock on some doors and stuff of that nature for.
You go right ahead. Start now, man.
Sorry about that.
I'll get you some info.
No, no problem. Thank you. Okay, looking at the meeting calendar, the 3rd, we're going to have a committee of the whole and a special council meeting. Do we need to talk about that, Liam?
We'll be putting income tax items up. That'll all be that's on it.
Okay, sounds good. February 10th, we're having a regular city council meeting. No meeting on the 17th for the holiday, and then a city council meeting on the 24th. So I will make a motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor? Hi, opposed?